Good morning, everybody. It's April 25th, 2023, shortly after 10:00 a.m. You're by call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors, and I would ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everybody. Next, I would entertain a motion for adoption of today's agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? Second by Faisal. Supervisor Faisal was on Zoom today. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The agenda is approved, and we will go on to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anybody who wants to make any comments? Okay, then I will close public comment number one. We'll move on to consideration of a proclamation recognizing May 8 through 12, 2023, as Economic Development Week in Story County. And I'll start reading it. Whereas economic development professionals are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, and universities, helping to create and expand jobs that facilitate growth in these regions. And whereas the creation of new opportunities for business and entrepreneurs is one of several key components in securing Story County economic future for generations to come, and where Story County is committed to fostering a business-friendly climate that will attract and retain employers, enable the opportunity to grow and remain competitive on a global scale, and generate new jobs and opportunities for our citizens.
And whereas Story County is committed to fostering a business climate that will attract employers, enable the county to grow, and remain competitive on a global scale, and generate new jobs and opportunities for our citizens. And whereas the Ames Economic Development Commission is committed to providing quality resources that boost economic growth and enhance quality of life throughout Story County. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 8, 2023, through May 12, 2023, as Economic Development Week, an appreciation of all our partners in the economic development field to make Story County the vibrant and thriving community is today. I move the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Proclamation has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have. We have one proclamation, and let's do that, and then let's take pictures. Okay? Second proclamation is on Administrative Professionals Day. You just start that?
Certainly, thank you. Whereas administrative professionals play a central role in coordinating the office operations of business, government, educational institutions, and other organizations. And whereas administrative professionals are vital contributors in today's team-oriented work environment and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for their organizations. And whereas the work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities, and most importantly, have the willingness to learn and accept new challenges. And.
Whereas Administrative Professionals Day is adjourned annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the important contributions of administrative support staff, sponsored by the International Association of Administrative Professionals. And whereas the county is extremely proud of our talented and highly skilled administrative professional staff and officially recognize and appreciate their hard work, support, and continued professional growth, now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2023, as Administrative Professional Days Day in Story County, and encourage all employers within Story County to recognize and appreciate their administrative support. I move the proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Proclamation has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll take just a quick break now and take some pictures. Let's start out with the one.
Economic Development.
Yeah, Economic Development, if you could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll move on to agency reports. We have one from Veterans Affairs is brought on here today.
Supervisor Merkin.
Pardon?
Can you hear me?
I heard that too. Who said it? Oh, yeah, okay. What did you say, Latifah?
I'm sorry. I said, I believe Dan Colhane is present and was interested in making a comment in relation to the proclamation.
You want to make a comment? You should come up to the table then.
Just briefly, yeah. Thank you, Supervisor Faisal. I, yeah, I wanted to take at this time, express our appreciation for the partnership we share with the Story County Board of Supervisors. It's a longstanding relationship that I think only gets better every year as we continue to do a wide variety of things around Story County. I think back, I've been here 17 years now, and I think back to when I came here and how things have changed to this point today in terms of the meaningful things that are going on in all of our communities across Story County. In the smallest of our communities, there's economic and community development occurring as a result of your investment as the Board of Supervisors and the investment of those local communities in themselves, which is really enriching and really important because, you know, while we need Ames to thrive, just like we need Des Moines to thrive, all of our communities in and around, the larger communities, need to thrive too. It's a place where there's a lot of great things happening, and it's as a result of partnerships like this. So Economic Development Week, which is next week, is a good time to think about that and reflect a little bit, and thank our partners like the Board of Supervisors for your ongoing support. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And yes, we do have a lot of people in a lot of our communities. We have ABC, we have Story County Economic Development. We have a lot of things going on, and sometimes people think of Story County, and they just think of Ames. And I want to thank you for your efforts in helping shine a light on all of Story County communities. Okay, let's head on. Is Brett McLean on Zoom? Okay, well, we do have a quarterly report from Veterans Affairs, and we've looked that over. So we will go on to Mary Greeley Mental Health. Mary Greeley Medical Center, I am sorry. Home Health Services Annual Report, Les White. Good morning, Les.
Good morning. I'm Les White, Director of Mary Greeley Home Health Hospice and Story County Public Health. I'd like to introduce our 50-mile radius. So we travel up into Iowa Falls, around Fort Dodge, down into Jefferson, dip a little bit into Pope County, then come up into Marshalltown. So the 50-mile radius is centered around Ames. I like to remind people what our mission and our vision is. Our mission, to advance health through specialized care and personal touch, and our vision is to be the best. In relation to our skilled and homemaker services, this past year, we served 348 Story County residents. This is down slightly from the previous fiscal year, but our customer satisfaction rates remain high for both programs, with our skilled program showing a 92.9% rating for the care provided by our staff. And the annual homemaker program survey showed 95.65% of our clients would not be able to stay in their homes without our homemaking services. We have also extended our environmental homemaker services to our home hospice patients as well, just to enhance that overall hospice experience. Not only do our clients find our services worthwhile, but the supportive care provided through that personal interaction is just as valuable. Another one of our programs is our Transitional Care Program, where we serve 301 Story County individuals. And that program is to help decrease rehospitalization and infection rates. We go into the home, a one-time visit. We do medication reconciliation. We follow up, make sure they have transportation to their physician visits. We do dressing changes as well as a home safety assessment. We have in the past utilized our Iowa Department of Public Health Promotions to support that visits because of the educational impact of it. But starting this fiscal year in July 22, these visits are now being covered by asset funding due to the shift of our local public health contract. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. Our hospice services. Our hospice services are our home hospice. Our average daily census there is 16, and our Israel Family Hospice House, our average daily census is almost five. In this area, this past year, we did decrease our funding for the hospice program as we found that most of those individuals have some type of funding. So we do not feel that we are missing anybody because we don't have the funding to provide that care. So we continue to provide hospice care to all of those that are in need. Our bereavement program, we provide community education as well as offer bereavement support groups. It really just is structured, physical, emotional, and spiritual components that is provided by our bereavement coordinator. He does both in-home visits as well as follow-up phone calls, and he also does support groups. In addition to that, this past year, we had our Tree of Love Celebration. We have 51 attending, and we did hold that outside the hospice house. And then we planted a tree in honor of those that have passed away this past year. We have 15 veterans that we honored in our We Honor Veterans program. And this program just provides education to our staff related to those needs of the VA individuals, as well as providing education and recognizing those needs for the VA at the end of life. Story County Public Health. This past year, we've been fortunate enough to increase our staffing. Jane Esserly Redding, she is one of our newest public health nurses, and we increased her to a regular part-time status, so she does work for us four days a week. We also have been able to add a paid internship every semester, and that internship is sponsored by our local public health contract as well as Mary Greeley Medical Center Foundation. COVID is very different for us. We spent a couple of years really involved in COVID, and so now it is, it's different. We no longer report it. It's really just one of our respiratory pathogens that we report, like any other respiratory thing. And the emergency proclamation ends on May 11. At this point in time, we're really unsure what difference that will make to us or what that means to us. We will continue to be the central hub of all the vaccine, so it will continue to come into our department, and then we will distribute throughout the county. I will tell you that over the past couple of years, we have distributed over 110,000 doses of COVID vaccine for our folks in Story County. And we still continue to have test Iowa kits available in our office, although not highly utilized. We did start our senior health clinics up then, a year ago. We served 727 folks in Story County. We have added an educational component though to those clinics. Those are clinics where we provide foot care and blood pressures and make sure that people have the resources they need. But we added an educational component that is supported by our local public health contract. And that includes things such as nutritional education. We've done fall prevention education, and we've also included music therapy for those folks as well. Immunization clinics continue. There, we had 115 individuals that we gave our immunizations to, as well as we continue with disease investigation. And there were 61 of those in the past year. In relationship to emergency management, we are part of the Central Iowa Healthcare Coalition. In regards to that, currently, we are working on our emergency preparedness plans and keeping those up to date. The next slide just really shows you the 10 essential services of public health. And I thought it would just be easier, I provided you with our last Board of Health report. And what we have done is we have really changed our Board of Health report to show you where our funding is, how we're using those dollars based on those 10 essential functions. So this past year, our local public health contract moved from a fee-for-service to a population-based model. And really, what that does for us is that those dollars now are spent for education, for staff time, providing education to individuals in Story County. We opted to just change over. In the first year, we did have an option for a five-year layout, but we changed up our asset funding to support those dollars for our homemaker program that we were currently getting from our local public health contract. And now, also, so that way it couldn't even out, and so we're able to provide more of that education. And if you have any questions about that shift or about the report that I provided, feel free to.
So you shifted your asset dollars to do more education?
More homemaker program, for the homemaker program. Some of our, yeah, some of our local public health fellows, that was the fee-for-service. We were able to provide that service on the sliding fee scale to folks in Story County. That's what they shifted to, an education model, basically. And then we took those dollars and we reallocated some of our asset funding this past year. So I took away some dollars we didn't need for our hospice program, and then was able to increase our homemaker.
Gotcha. I just didn't hear you say homakers. Thank you.
Sure. So successes, opportunities, and challenges. We, I feel, have done a pretty good move in our public health to a population-based model. We continue to have strong relationships with those individuals in groups here in Story County. We lead the Story County Quality Living Alliance Group. We work well with all the schools. We have a member now in the NAACP Committee. We've been doing some things with the Bridge Home. We've provided education at One Ames, United Ways, always a good supporter of us, and we work well with them. And we have somebody involved in the Refugee and Immigrant Voices in Action. And the last thing that we did is we did start a Story County Public Health Facebook page. So I encourage individuals to get on there, and they can see the programs that we are offering. Our Board of Health is also very supportive of us, and we are appreciative of that. As far as staffing, really been pretty fortunate. We are seeing some retirements this year. Currently, I do have one home health nurse that will be retiring in May, and I have not been able to fill that position at this time. I did have a full-time quality improvement staff member that retires in September and haven't been able to fill that, so we feel fortunate about that. Our turnover rate, besides retirement, is pretty low. So we are, we are good with that. And it's also helped that we do have that paid interim to help us through the semesters. I too plan on retiring at the end of the year. And I, my succession plan, his name is Eric Adelman. He's my assistant director. He's been with me for over a year, so learning some different opportunities as well. And so I look for him to carry on after I retire. Also, new MCO, which I'm sure you guys are all aware of, Malina Care. They'll be coming in July 1st. We have notified, been notified, I, at those letters have went out to some of our folks. So my team is aware, and they are working with our clients to hopefully make that transition smooth, or as smooth as it can be. So we'll continue to work on that and see how that goes. The last thing I just want to mention, and I don't have a lot to say about it because I don't know a lot about it, but the state, at a recent meeting, started to talk about regionalization of public health. And they really talk about that, you know, we have 99 counties and 99 public health and 99 ways of doing things. So they are looking to maybe some consistency throughout our counties, and that will come about probably through this regionalization. I will tell you that as soon as I know or understand how to work. I know Lisa sits on our Board of Health. I'll definitely keep them abradd of how this plays out, and I will, as far as you guys too. So we'll know. And you may know more information than I do. So lastly, I am always proud of our services and look forward to serving you in Story County in this upcoming year. Do you have questions?
I have a question, I have more of a comment. So I know that some of the letters that are going out with the MCOs that tell folks they can stay with their current MCO if they want. If you're interacting with folks, tell them to make sure they look at the back of the letter to confirm that it's listing the current MCO that they're with. Because some folks are getting letters saying, oh, you can stay with your current MCO, but then on the other side, it's identifying their MCO as Malina or one of the others. Okay. And so folks are then calling back and saying, no, I'm with AmeriGroup. I want to stay with AmeriGroup.
Yeah, I will do that, so they can look back at the letter.
I just had Supervisor Faisal, did you have any questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions right now. Just thank you, Les, and congratulations on your upcoming retirement. Thank you.
I did have one question. It was about your senior health clinics and your immunization clinics. Do you, where are those held? Do you have them out in the communities?
We sure do. So our senior health, yeah, clinics are held in all of the communities in Story County. As far as immunization clinics, when we go to do our foot clinics, like if we go to Colo or Story City or wherever, then like during flu season, we take those out too for those. And we did COVID, of course, throughout the county as well. So, yeah, we try to hit everybody in Story County. As far as our education that we're providing now with our public health, for instance, our KEES program, which has been very popular. It's a prevention of dementia-type program. Like we have a class starting here in Nevada, and we've had in the right aims and play it up in Story City. So we really try to get out and reach some of all the individuals.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I want to echo Supervisor Faisal. Thank you for all the work you've done all these years. We certainly got to know you even better. Those of you didn't know us, who didn't know you very well, got to know you much better in the last couple of years, you know, with all the COVID planning, and it was really a pleasure working with you on that. And we appreciated your leadership then, and hope you'll come back and see us before you retire.
I sure will. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Les. Okay, we'll move on to Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Workforce Retraining and Outreach Quarter Report, and that would be Nikki and Greg. Nikki, your report is attached first, so I assume you're going first. If you don't have to.
I fully support that decision.
Good morning, Supervisors. It's you. Well, like outreach.
Okay, Greg will go first.
That's my, yeah. Good morning. First quarter report here. I can't believe we're almost, almost in May already, but look at our rural communities and the projects here. Some of the things I have to talk about too are updated as of last week. Just some recent developments as well. So as you can see, we've been pretty busy out here in the past four months. Everything from demolitions to housing, zering. You'll notice the bottom of that category in the top left. I will be bringing some ARPA information to Leanne at the end of this week. Their city council has made a formal request to reallocate their ARPA dollars. I have details and numbers from Bolton Link, and now that that is done, I can formally propose to Leanne, who can then review it, and then we can have a discussion next week on that. Gilbert, everything's moving forward with comp planning. Maxwell, I submitted drafts, a program for rehabilitation project for their housing money they received from Story County Housing Trust that was approved at council last week while I was in DC. They, in total, adopted it, so they have a program in fact, and we have hoped to have all the dollars out by October. So that is moving forward as well. Collins, talking to new business owners in their downtown. There is a new facade grant that I talked about the last time I gave an update. They are ready to move forward with that. So that is something I'm going to be submitting here in the next couple of weeks. Also as well, there's a new development, a downtown business owner, sorry, downtown business owner at the corner of the downtown, right down from the community building, is wanting to redevelop their property. I talked to him yesterday. He is wanting to look at options for redeveloping 1,800 square feet of storefront in downtown Collins. So that is going to be a big piece of real estate for that community. Part of Iowa Trail, the Destination Iowa Grant. I have a planning meeting tomorrow with Collins and Story County Conservation on that one, and what that is going to be doing is working with Story County Conservation on Destination Iowa money and planning it with Collins to make sure everyone's on board and streamlining together the projects. Collins has some projects in the Hopper. Story County Conservation does as well. We want to make sure everyone's on the same page, so we don't have any overlap, and there's no wasted resources. So that is right there. Excuse me. The biggest news I got right now is Roland. Avalia Bank is closing, as I mentioned. The city approved purchase of the building. Avalia Bank was great to work with. We worked out a purchase price that was within the means of the city. They will be moving in preferably Jewish. So about 45, 60 days for remodel. City Hall will move in, the local businesses that are already there, insurance, they will stay. We're talking incubator space for the remaining offices, the extra space. And also, once City Hall moves out with the new project to the north, potentially, there'll be an incubator space and shelter facility. So that is where we're going to be reusing that space in the downtown. Once the full move is done to the old bank building, the demolition will begin on the current building, and then those lots will be redeveloped with, what we're targeting is first-floor commercial, second-story housing. Urban Blight and TIF and all those projects, and all the financings are already underway. So all that stuff's already been done. McCallsburg, talking with Amy and Colo. They have agreed to move forward with sharing a joint clerk position. Been working with Amy. She will be doing a joint position with Colo and McCallsburg. They will have someone onsite in McCallsburg twice a week to run their city hall, be there for billing and receiving people to come in through the front door. But the major filings and taxes and budgeting will be done by Amy. So Colo, I'm sorry, McCallsburg and Colo will be working a formal agreement. It won't be a 2080, just a formal agreement. Have checked with the League of Cities, and it's not required other than a standard contract. Fire grants, TIF certifications on hold until they figure out the line item they have. They have TIF funds available from before the audit. That still has not been reimbursed according to the audit specs. So those have to be done first before we can recertify the TIF. And then six residential lots, we're going to be putting up on Lewis on the Ames Chamber EDC website. I have a developer that has shown interest in those six lots. They're primed, they're connected with Alliant. All they need to do is have a developer look at it and see potential interest as well. So six new homes there as well. Cambridge, goal setting is set for May at the city council meeting. We're going to be doing some goal settings, some economic development, visioning and things like that with the YSS campus underway nearby. And then the YSS campus under way nearby. And then the winery as well. So there's some ideas on how they want to utilize that space if they have an interest. And then also Slater, just this past week, I had a phone call with the new, new owners of that. They are wanting to start construction third week of May. And that is that podcast, coffee shop, food truck model right along the county highway right there. They are wanting to move forward with that concept. So facade grants, they have private financing already set up. Really, the specs are really nice. So I'll be bringing facade grant forward for that with the full diagrams and anything else you submitted to me. Any questions so far? And then lastly, just some concurrent projects, water project with Iowa State. Rural OCIO, I'm at the town hall tonight with Supervisor Merkin and then the Rural Summit. And then lastly as well, DC last week when we were out there, one of our speakers was with the Department of Commerce. Supervisor Headens was there talking to that person and brought up what had already been done. We have five years of private money coming and it has to be, it can be local nonprofits, it can be local government agencies as well. We're talking millions and millions of dollars. So there's going to be a lot of work that we're already doing with Supervisor Merkin. But we're going to have a lot of ability to fund a lot of gaps, I believe, in the Story County area.
And that's still going to be run through the OCIO. And dependent upon whether our intent to qualify for story and Boone counties has gotten approved.
Correct. The way it was described was the NTIA has gone from twenty members in their organization for their department under the Department of Commerce to two hundred in the past year.
Oh my gosh.
They are ramping up significantly in staffing. It will flow through the state. However, it will be under the control of the local agencies once the funds are submitted and received. So if Story County would to apply like with the opportunity zones we just did, the money would come to the county and then the county would have control over it.
Do we know when the OCIO is going to announce who that, who they've approved on the intent to qualify that we submitted?
That we submitted. I'm hearing within the next thirty days.
Good.
The intent from the Department of Commerce official that we talked to while we were in DC emphasized heavily that it's going to be five years consistently. So the money is not going to be able to be held, it's going to be pushed out through the state, in this case the OCIO. But the money will be consistent over and over and over again for the next five years.
She, she emphasized there was a lot of money. Didn't know that there'd ever be anything like this again.
Forty-eight billion dollars is the number she put out there.
Forty-eight billion. Billion, yeah.
Total.
Nationwide.
Nationwide.
Okay. Did she say how much Iowa?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
Beat money, we'd know by June thirty.
Good.
So.
Moving forward. Okay, thanks for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Other questions for Greg before we move on to Nikki? Any questions? Hearing none? Nikki, you're on.
So, and retraining, so retraining, I read the stats to you. You see that you also received the Excel spreadsheet of all the students and things. I will tell you that this quarter, last year, as a total, we had forty-two, this quarter, I had twenty-four. So it's grown quite a bit. I stay very busy with it. We've got a lot of different classes that students are going through. We've got a lot of phlebotomy, IT help desk. Though not at the Ames campus, but students are wanting to take those classes. And so they're driving to the urban campus or Southridge. So, you know, if they're willing to, you know, drive, we would love to provide that. So we did get another one. CNA is always staying strong, but we have tomorrow night. We usually have a CNA, it's actually going to be a healthcare meet and greet, because we have IT help desk, we've got CNAs, we've got phlebotomy. We've got everything. And then dog grooming was also a new one. There seems to, I believe, from what the students said, they're actually going to open up their own place. So that's kind of exciting to see an entrepreneur go through. They did an amazing job, but yeah, so I mean, just the amount of students that we're seeing go through now. We have a lot still going through the summer, which summer usually slows down, but I think it's going to be a busy summer. We have two students who will go through EMT, which is something new for us as well. So they will be going down to Ankeny for that. So that's exciting. And then we've got an IEM, which is the Industrial Electrical Maintenance. And we've got thirteen students for that and then we've got a ton of CNAs. I don't have the full list of them, but Ames opened up a section and then Boone always has theirs going as well. So everything is going very well with retraining. Lots of activity. So, yeah. And then workforce. All kinds of different events. So Innovate You was something new that I did with the help of Iowa State Research Park, Availa Bank. And just some great mentors. I grabbed them from pretty much everywhere in the county. But we took students from Boone and Ogden School and brought them into the research park and I spent a whole day coming up with their own business plans and then they actually did a pitch at the end to some judges. And it's absolutely great to see these students' minds and how amazing they are and the, you know, the business plans that they can come up with and just, you know, a day time. So that's fun. We are actually going to be running that again this fall. I reached out to all seven schools in Story County and then Boone and Ogden would like to come back again and do it. So we're going to do two different days. We're going to get a few different schools. Women in Leadership, that was in March. We have another one coming up in July. It was a great event. CJ Warner was great. We had Addie from, you know, the Ames PD. Sandra was amazing. I know she's sitting back there. But it was a great event and it was, it's just the first of a three-part series. So in July, we have another one coming. And we'll do some more strengths based stuff for the people that sign up. A lot of mock interviews. I spent a day and a half at some schools doing all kinds of mock interviewing. Project, Project Search, I also did some mock interviewing. Always fun to do that. It's, it's amazing, the students that we have in, in our county. So love seeing that. We've also got See Yourself in Ames is coming up, which is crazy. I can't believe it's almost time for that, but we've got our first few. We will have four this year. So we've got May and June already planned and going strong. We'll start sending out information to the businesses so that their interns can join us. Excited about that. And then of course, I've always got stuff I'm working on. Tomorrow will be the first time that I do a business etiquette lunch with some high schoolers. We're going to take the Nevada IJAG students and do some business etiquette. They've been working on their professional portfolios. So they'll come in with their resumes, their portfolios, know how to shake someone's hand, look in the eye. Sit down, have conversations about jobs, education, things like that. So really excited to see. That's, you know, the first time we've, we're doing that. And so I'm excited to see how that goes and we can expand that out. I have a National Guard. This is going to be a huge event. So we did this last fall and we had about thirty people come. Right now I've got a hundred and twenty-four people signed up. So it kind of grew then. But really excited for the businesses to come and just see what the National Guard does. You know, make those partnerships on, you know, the jobs, whether they're part-time. Or, you know, a lot of these soldiers, you know, do retire and they're only forty-five. So, you know, they have a full lot of life to live yet, that, you know, they're wanting to get back out there into the workforce. So just making those connections with the business and our military. That'll be a really fun, exciting day. Teaching for the workforce. We'll do two days again and we've got all kinds of great things for the teachers. We've got twenty-two teachers signed up already, so we are full. We'll go over to Dan Foss, we're going to hang out with ISU Athletics a little bit. We're going to come here on Nevada Main Street and talk to a bunch of entrepreneurs. But so we'll be all over the county again. We're going to be at Story County Medical. But it's a great day for those teachers to really kind of see what's going on in the workforce and bring that into their classrooms. So that's a fun two days. I already mentioned the Women in Leadership, we'll have that in July. Minority Business Event. I have a professor from ISU who's going to help me put that on and it'll be a fun day for just, you know, all of those minority entrepreneurs and small business owners to get together, learn and grow and just have a really good day together and maybe even do some networking there. And then also I will be hosting an intern from Ames High School. She's going to follow me for a little bit. She graduates and she already knows that she's going to go to DMAC, but she really wanted to get some time and see what I do. So I told her, I hope you can keep up. No, I'm just joking. But so that'll be fun to kind of have her put along before she goes on to college and starts moving on. So all kinds of good stuff going on there. And then there's also a bunch of stats there as you go down further. With all of our social media postings, the workinames.com. We did a ton of career fairs this first quarter. The list is very extensive. I will have to say that Sarah Dvorsky from my office, thank goodness that she helped me out because she helped with a lot of those. Because there were so many going on. So we did hit some schools. We also hit the Big Twelve Virtual One. But there's a lot of great connections there. And I think that is mostly it. So any questions for me in regards to the work?
I don't know. I don't have a question and I'm just appreciate all that you've done, just looking at all the numbers here. I do find it interesting that you've got the dog grooming.
I know.
Fun. I would say though, that there are a number of people that I've run into that cannot find groomers for their pets. So they're, yeah, I was thinking of you Greg, actually. But that is, that is a huge need.
Yeah, I was shocked and I had one student just graduated and another one that'll be doing it again this summer and I'm like.
Yeah, there, there is.
Go to daycare, so I'm, I get it, but I think we're actually business from whatever so far is looking at like the Colo area. So.
That'd be great.
Have a, a new entrepreneur here in the community real soon.
Quickly.
Daycare.
Thank you. Yeah, when I say I'm dropping girls off at daycare, it's the four-legged ones.
When you pick them up at the end of the day.
Amazing, yes. Sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. Supervisor Faisal, did you have any questions?
No, thank you so much though for all of the work you're both doing.
I do have a comment and a question.
Okay.
Women in Leadership was excellent. That was very good. I want to thank everybody who put, who helped to put that on. It was a great networking event. And I learned a lot in that and I plan on attending again in July. So here's my question though. I was kind of involved in the beginning on putting the proposal together with Brenda for this workforce training program.
Yes.
What we talked about at that time was this was temporary money because this was ARPA money. And we needed to figure out, is this going to be of use to employers? Because we do need to figure out, once our temporary rescue plan funds are gone, how we keep this going. So that's the underlying current here. My question to you is, have you talked with employers? Or do you have a way of getting feedback from employers about the use and value of this program to them?
Yeah, so I say communication with them in regards to, so like the IEM class that we have. I reached out to them saying that this is available. You know, do you have, because a lot of that class is people who already have jobs. So it's people who work at American Packaging, Dan Foss, things like that. But they need to upskill and so they're going to take this class. So in my conversations with them about, here's a class that is provided to you. You know, are you using it? I do that with them. So I have not asked them, you know, is this something you would support me further? Because I want them to keep continuing to use it. But, yeah, I mean, that's something that as we talk and as we do meet and greets and we have conversations. I always following up with, did you hire that person? You know, did they reach back out to you? You know, so are they actually getting the students? So it's not just the meet and greet. Are the students actually following up? Are they getting jobs and things like that? So, yeah, we do have those conversations, but I have not formally said, you know, would you give me money to keep doing this?
I'm suggesting you do that now, but what I guess I'm wondering is, is do you have a database that keeps you, that you know when people went to certain employers?
Yep.
And can you follow up eventually and see if those people stayed with jobs? And then present some information to the employers about the value that they have received out of this program.
Yep. Yep. And that's why I keep the Excel sheet that I sent to you guys. I keep it for the whole time. So even a student who maybe graduated last year, you know, if they take a job, they always reach back out to me, which is great because I tell them to reach back out to me and stay in communication. I always put in, there's very last column, you know, where they're at, what their job is and things like that. So we do keep track of what companies are utilizing it and where these students are going to be employed.
The other question I have for you is of the people that you're seeing getting into this program. Are you seeing many people who've come from outside of Story County, have come to Story County to to look for employment? And that might not be in through workforce, but I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering how we're doing in recruiting workforce from other, you know, other communities.
Right. So as far as retraining, no, because we do say this is a Story County program.
Okay.
So it is people that are, they're in Story County. And I'm still, I mean, like I had a meeting with CCJ, I had a meeting with Bridge Home, like there's still people that are finding out about this program, which I can't believe because I, I'm pretty sure I talked about it. But I'm still reaching out to people just to be like, hey, do you remember I have this program? So those are definitely Story County only. As far as everything else, we are reaching out for the workforce with like our workinames.com, workinbooneia.com, those things. The Traction Magazine and then also the ISU Daily. So that reaches all the ISU students and alumni. And we have ads constantly going on that. And then also a lot of what Sarah and I do with our career fairs is, you know, it's not just Story County. I would tell you the Boone National Guard event where there's a hundred and twenty-four people, that is not all Story County. There's a lot of people that their headquarters are in another state. But like they know something, like one of their employees lives here, so they're sending their employee, but they're actually based out of another state. Is something that I've seen and also a lot of them are from Pope County, Dallas County. So they're all over around us.
Because we're looking at an unemployment rate of one point nine percent in March. And I, I keep hearing there are businesses that are interested in coming to Story County and locating, you know, here and I'm thinking, where are we? We, it's good that we're finding that, that one point, that one point nine percent the people who can be retrained. But at some point, we're going to be saying, there's just nobody else. How do we get all the workers that these businesses and industries are going to need to keep Story County?
Yeah, and some employees that live out of Story County, they go into the retraining program. And what we do with them is they know that they're not going to get the, the extra benefits, but they still use WTA. So DMAC has that program, the Workforce Training Academy, that is throughout the whole DMAC area. So they're still able to get classes paid for, you know, stay in communication with us in regards to jobs and things like that. So we still have that working relationship with DMAC as well.
I would just add too, I mean, the unemployment rate for people with disabilities is sixteen percent. And so when you look at like Project Search or some of those others, there's a population that may need a short or small accommodation. But there's a workforce there ready and willing.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Hawkeye Molding in Roland is, it's a great example. Ryan will take people, quality people, any, any time and place and fill several positions that way as well.
Yeah, that's definitely one thing that we've always talked about and is something that we're hoping to bring to Symposium at the end of the year as well, because it is something that I don't think people understand.
And just in closing, I will mention on my other foot, immigration reform, placement of Ukrainian refugees, all that stuff is a top priority too that we work with, with the state and the Fed to try to welcome them and make sure they're placed in the community. So, you know, we have welcoming people and bring them in and make them home.
Excellent. It's very sad. I remember when we had Southeast Asian folks coming in here, coming to Story County. It's sad to see people leaving their own country that is falling apart in some ways. But if they can come here and we can open that door and make them welcome and help them get situated, that helps us. So we're in that situation. Thank you for doing me. Thank you both of you. And now, now we have the city of Roland and then Jody, we have Nathan Hovish. Good morning Nathan. Good morning, Nathan. Haven't seen you for a while.
I don't think Jody sent you any fancy presentations. For our air paying money, for the water main looping side of things, we're working with our engineer and the property owners to get easements through. Um, the biggest one, we have coordinated, um have the DNR on board with all of it. They're happy that this project's moving forward. For the stormwater side of things, um the engineers designing some of the bigger scale lines that we're putting in and redoing some of the smaller spots. I'm just working with a local contractor. Right now, they're contracted to do some of the areas where there's a safety concern because of sinkholes and whatnot. So we're getting those taken care of first. And then I'm hoping by this fall, we can start moving forward with larger scale portions of it. But we're still moving forward, doing investigation. We're bought a camera to run through the lines and trying to figure out what actually needs replaced and what just needs repairs, so. That's where we're at with that. We're moving forward and.
So are you pretty much on track time-wise?
Yeah, well, we'll get it done. Um, they said if we can get all these smaller little things done this year and then be out for bid to get spring construction of the larger scale stuff, it should be good.
Good to hear.
I don't have any questions.
Supervise your face. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
And I, I don't know what, when we do these little presentations, I don't know if you guys want pictures and stuff or if you just want to tell you what we're doing. But I feel like I'm too short and we didn't just getting it done, so.
We just, we just want to know that.
It's still moving forward.
Moving forward, things are on track. And we don't need to see, you know, if you brought house pictures you want to bring sometime, a picture of a sinkhole.
Okay.
You know, whatever. But um just, just tell us you're on track and things are going fine and that's about it. We're glad you're doing this. This is good work. Thank you. So let me see where we are. Consideration of minutes. Okay, consideration of minutes of our last meeting. Entertained a motion for approval of the four eighteen minutes. Second. Moved in second to the Owen favors, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. They're approved. I know I'm not doing roll calls, pardon me, I'm just.
It's all right.
Okay, consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Okay. Um, okay, we'll vote by roll call as time heads.
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. I'm sorry, the things I'm sharing lately.
Okay, that one was personnel actions. You just said minutes.
Personnel actions are approved. Okay, let's go to claims. Is there a motion to approve claims?
I would move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to do approve claims. Faisal?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. I was just gonna say the meanings I've been sharing lately, we have not dead roll call votes, so I'm gonna practice. So I think we are now to public hearing items.
Consent agenda consent. I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Faisal, will you second that?
I second.
Okay, Edens?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda is approved. And now we will go to public hearing items, which there are none. So we'll go to additional items and hear from Darren Moon on final plans for two twenty street paving.
Good morning. We've been discussing the thirteenth street paving project and kind of rejuvenate it, get it going again. Um, we've talked about some timeframes. Uh, so this is, this would be kind of like the kickoff. We've had to revise the plan sums. Rbio's made some changes out there, so we had to incorporate those into the plans. We'd also had to come up the new cost estimate. Unfortunately, the costs have gone up considerably, considerably the past year. The rise grant is a fifty fifty grant, uh and the original estimate from the DOT is one point six eight seven million for this project. They did put a pretty good fluff factor on that two years ago, but uh inflation has eaten that up and then some. So we're closer to about the two million dollar point right now. So I've gone back to them and asked if they're still at the fifty percent with our new estimate. Uh, she has to take it to the DOT Commission to get that approved, the increased cost. So still waiting on that. But today, if you approve the final plans, that also gives me uh the authority to go out and start right away negotiations again. And as you know, there's a decent chance this could lead to condemnation, which is require probably some attorney fees and stuff like that as well. But uh, so today I'm asking for approval of the plans and uh authorization proceed with right away negotiations. And what this also does is kind of tells me we're moving forward with the project. So uh you are committing funds to it in some way. I'm not sure where they're going to come from. Most obvious source is bonding that wouldn't have to be done until about a year from now. Um, but we do not have the current funds to do this, so it will require that additional funding. So you're essentially telling me you're gonna do that. We just don't know how yet.
When will the DOT Commission look at this?
Uh, she didn't give me a timeframe. They meet once a month. Um, so it might take a little while to get on their agenda, but uh I'll have to check with her on the timing.
Okay.
So what bumping that up to two million dollar estimate, half of that would be one million dollars from the right. And so it essentially increased the rise grant about a hundred and fifty thousand would be the end result. So if they do not approve that increase, it would just be an additional hundred and fifty thousand out of our pocket.
So it was one point six million, so it was going to be eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred forty-three is what we had.
Forty-three, that's, okay, that's where you get the additional hundred and fifty. And you said we have a year to bond for that?
Yeah, we technically won't need the money until um construction has started and that will be mid twenty-four.
But if they say no, they're not going up to the one million, that'll cost us second hundred and fifty-ish.
Yeah. Um, assuming how the bid price come in. There's cement issues right now with concrete. There might even be a shortage they're predicting next year, so. That's the bad news. The good news is the DOT is gonna have a lot of PC pavement going on in the area next year with all the interchanges and stuff. So there'll be a plant in the area which could bring the cost down, so that's the.
So do you have any questions, Darren?
I don't.
Supervise your face. Do you have any questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I just do want to take a moment and say thank you to Darren. Um, I know this project has been up and down uh multiple times uh the past several years. And um I feel like we've all done everything we can to find ways to get this project to happen in the most affordable way um without intruding on others. And um it'll be good if we can see this project finished, then I think, um I speak for all three of us um in saying how much we appreciate the work that you consistently do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we, we all agree with that most definitely. So um if there are, did you have anything else, Darren? Did I cut you off?
No, I guess the only thing I had at the end is, as far as the right away negotiations, I, I recommend and I just worked directly with Ethan on what our offers will be and stuff like that, um rather than directly with the board. And uh I can give you updates if we need to get some input from the board, but I think Ethan is the best approach right now.
Okay, yeah, I think working with county attorney's office is good. Okay, if there's no further information or discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion for approving the final plans for the two hundred and twenty street paving project uh with all those numbers and authorizing right away negotiations for the project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Head and second by Faisal. Um, I'll vote now, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Thank you for all your work on that. And we'll look forward to hearing the, the good news from DOT. Okay. Okay, Darren, your department reports. We're on to other reports. And Darren, you're still here.
This is the manure.
Manure management.
Okay.
Or application, excuse me.
Uh, yeah, we're, we've been drafting a policy. Um, we're, what's on the agenda this morning is still a draft. So I'm not asked for approval of the policy today. We're just going over it again. My goal is to get this somewhat finalized before I send it to the county attorney's office for review. So we're getting close to that point now. And I think we'll get some input from a local farmer here as well to answer any questions we have. Uh, mostly about the pumping operations and how they work. We had a, since we talked about this last, I had a list of items that we wanted to get incorporated into the policy. And I've done most of all of that. Um, I'll touch on some of those. We wanted to make sure that the, the person's performing uh the pumping are certified through the DNR. And so we've added that into the policy. Uh, the DOT or the DNR also helps oversee that uh system as well. So um they do need to be certified to do that, but our policy just backs that up. And we do require their certification number on the permitting. Uh, we want to require certified employees to be on site throughout the duration of the pumping. Um, we've added some of that. The only item left, I did talk with ISU um extension. The people that do the training, there was a little uh concern on their end. We were, wanted to require at least three people out there. Um, we, we can learn a little bit more about the operations if that's a possibility or not when we talk to the local farmer here. Um, they didn't think uh or thought that requiring three out there at once might be a hard thing. Um, but we'll, we'll see how, if, if it's not a hard thing, we can just leave that in the policy. But right now, I've just added uh they need to have enough.
Enough employees on site to detect a spill in a timely fashion. It's number ten on the permit. And that was the, the one that I had a question about.
Yeah, we can adjust that if need be, but let's find a little bit more about the process first. Um, and then the permit application should include the dates of duration of pumping. We've added that to the permit. So we know the exact dates that they will be pumping. And then I've given them eight hours to get the piping out of the, said forty-eight hours last time. But I dropped it to eight, because once they're done, it shouldn't need to leave in there any longer than eight hours, just to get it out of the, the piping system. Uh, second list of items here, how soon do you want the applicant to reimburse county for the crossing? If we put the crossing in, we need to get reimbursed. I put in there that we need to be reimbursed before they're allowed to do any pumping through it. So that should solve that issue. Uh, require a new permit application each time the applicant requests to pump. Uh, we've added that into the policy and the permit. And then we have an additional permit form that, it's not on the agenda, but it's the renewal type uh process. So every time they want to pump again, there'd be the renewal permit, so we know who's pumping and when. So that's been added. And then the fine for pumping without permission, that's something I've kind of tied into our work, use of right away permit. Uh, if they do it without permission, they're in violation of use of right away that's already in place. And that has a fining system built into it already. So I've just referred to that uh permit that's in place already by the, the board. And that, I'll double check with Ethan on that and how the fine process works on that. That, that's all set up. You can give the idea of the dollar amounts in that. Use of right away permit refers to the county infraction in our ordinances. And that's a, a first offense is not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars and then each repeat offense is not to exceed a thousand dollars. I think those are kind of built into state code, so I don't know if we can exceed those. Uh, but that's what the fines will be. There was a question about um an additional fine for spills. And that's one I'll still have to check with uh the county attorney on if we're able to do that. But we do know that the DNR does fine if there's a spill. So maybe we just put that portion on the DNR to come up with those fines. So I think almost everything's been addressed. I will ask uh Scott, Henry, if you want to come up now. Do you have that one sheet I gave you? I, I wanted to read some of that off to the board. Um, we talked about fines and DNR. I did a quick check. There was a recent uh article just a month ago from the DNR. There were some fines for three separate issues recently. Uh, one was a manure spill from uh pumping. And they found that uh there were some non-certified employees doing the pumping, so they were fined forty-five hundred dollars for those. Another one uh was actually vehicle overturned into a dry creek. And as you know, that's what I'm trying to prevent is these heavy vehicles hauling on highways. So the pumping is a better idea in my mind. So even when they run vehicles, it does uh, it can cause spills as well. And they were fined thirty-five hundred dollars for that overturned vehicle. And then the third one was another lack of certifications, which was done by the DNR doing routine department visits. So they do inspections on these uh through the DNR and they were fined five thousand dollars uh on that. So just to kind of give you the idea, there is some oversight from the DNR as well. It's not just us. Um, I think we'll just kind of go into the actual pumping process a little bit here and get some feedback uh from Scott Henry here, who has requested some crossings um himself. Uh, so that's kind of what spurred this whole uh permit process. And, and we also do have some current pumping even in other places, the kind of that are happening already without our permission. So we do need a policy one way or another, whether we do the crossings or not, but uh this needs to be done. So as far as, let's, I guess, start with uh the number of employees that are generally out there. I believe this one spill had uh I can, I can speak to it.
Close to the microphone, it doesn't pick up really well unless you. Thank you.
The guy I talked to at Iowa State Extension, he said there's usually uh a runner, they call it, on a four-wheeler that's constantly running the line all day. And you also mentioned you typically don't go more than a mile or two with your minds. Yeah, so it just becomes not economically viable to pump beyond three miles. So the majority of your pumping is occurring typically within the first mile and a half of the facility. And our preference is in the immediate vicinity of the facility, which is what we've been doing um for our sites. Obviously, we want to be good stewards and so we don't want to just continue to put the same amount of manure on the same field every year. If we can spread that out, um that's beneficial. And so in the past, when we've had to go to a site or a field farther away, we would, we would have to use tankers, which you can put sixty-three hundred gallons of manure in a semi. Well, if you think about facility having one point two million gallons of, of manure annually, you know, that's depending, again, depending on the year, between a hundred and fifty on the low end and probably over two hundred semis on the high end per facility um for us, for Longview Port. And so, so that's obviously, you can go farther when you have these trucks on the road. But it, you have obviously an unknown, you know, if you think about what we're talking about with the culvert here, you have a point, one point of inflection with the county that um has a risk of a spill versus driving two, three miles down the road. Um, when you're using a tanker.
Um, when you're using a tanker and then the semis, there's quite a few employees involved. Because usually they'll have probably two or three trucks running. At one time, you'll have somebody in the applicator and somebody back at the pump site. And so you could have up to. Four or five people involved when you're using the dragline system. Um, you always need two for sure, because you have to have somebody running the applicator. And then the other person is monitoring the line and the pump. And so I, so two is what we have typically seen, um, when we're doing it. I, I do not know if. You know, if you're getting farther away, if they're using three, we don't. We have enough ground available to us under easement that we. Getting three miles would be very rare for us, I guess. Um, but, but yeah, that's.
Extension also mentioned that most of these new systems have automatic shut offs. If there's a leak detected, does there?
Yeah, if it's automatic shut off and, um, just. When you think about it, right, the way that we are controlling, because we have to commit to a rate that we're applying, because we can't over apply. That's part of our annual permit that we file with the DNR every year. And so in order for us to manage that rate, it's all driven off of pressure in the system. If you get a leak, your pressure is going to drop immediately. So you're going to know if something happens. And then that's when you turn the line off. And so it's, the detection is, is, is simple, um, and I don't want to say easy, but it's simple to detect. And then you can immediately, um, turn it off to avoid further issue, um, from a, from a broader leak. Uh, which again is why we prefer the dragline system. You know, because if you have one semi that overturns, and I'm assuming when it says vehicle. Yeah, that's what it was, was a tanker overturned. Well, if you dump. Sixty-three hundred gallons of manure in one, one spot. With very, with no other way to shut it off, I can see why that would be. And I can't remember if that was the larger of the fines or not, but.
I did find it in here. The first one was a, a pumping manure when a valve malfunctioned, released an unknown amount of manure. Um, so that was a valve malfunction.
Yep. So we've, we also, um. One thing to clarify too, we don't apply our own manure. We contract with a licensed. Party to do that, um, and so that for us, one of the things when I read through the proposal. You know, we're, our insurance company is already asking us to make sure that any contractor we're using is carrying these same levels. So I think that the policy put in place is adequately, you know, is putting protections in that. Um, that kind of piggybacks off of what, um, what both private sector insurance companies and the DNR puts on us. Um, obviously, we still. Have responsibility as the building owner to hire people that are certified. And so that's where these fines come back on the pig owner or the barn owner in those scenarios. But, um. Yeah, they're, and the DNR offers those certifications. I do know that. We've looked into getting certified ourselves if we wanted to pump our own manure. Obviously, a lot of manure applications occur during harvest and so when we're farming, it's. We've always said, we want people focused on that activity. To, to your point earlier, you want people. That are focused and monitoring, that's not worrying about. Where's, where's the combine and different things that may also be going on. And so that's why we have chosen at least today to, to always hire out those services.
Did you say you typically do that twice a year?
Our goal is once a year in the fall, um, so that was when we built our facilities. We tried to make sure that they were sized appropriately with the pits underneath to where we could do, uh, once a year application. And that's been, um, we have, we've been able to honor that. We have not done any spring applications, um, to date. Uh, and our goal is to, to try and avoid that as well. We. I can't, I can't commit that we'll never do that, right? You just, you don't know, um, but one of the things, um. That we have done is we monitor those, those pit levels, um, weekly, if not, or monthly, if not weekly. And we did have a facility that was getting more full, uh, faster than, than we had anticipated. Instead of pumping in, in a period of time that we did not feel was environmentally sound. We actually transferred manure from one site to the other in order to, to make sure that our, our levels were all. In place. So there's things that we can do to manage it. Uh, we prefer pumping in the fall, um, just because. I think it's more neighborly. There's, and if you're doing it in the spring, that's more springtime. People are starting to go. Go outside versus late fall when it's getting colder, people are saying go inside. So there's, it's, there's not a real science behind our reasoning there. You can, environmentally, it's supportive either way from a soil standpoint, but. From a neighborly standpoint, we try to do as much as we can in the fall.
Um, I have several questions, but let's start with the other supervisors first. I, go ahead, go ahead. Supervisor Faisal?
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
How long, what would be the duration of, of an occurrence of using the dragline? Like six hours, eight hours?
It's typically over a period of four days, um, four to five days to, to pump, um, one of our sites. So I think if you, if you think about it as a. Two barn site for us, we, we, we figure it takes five pumping days. And if, you know, sometimes they won't pump on, on the weekend or whatnot. So there may be a period of time where they pause a day or the weather. Uh, I saw in here, you had in here, you know, if it's raining or, you know, whatnot. Um, and so that may shut them down for a day, but if they had full days of working, typically four to five days for us.
So you would have two, usually you would have two people on supervising it to make sure.
Yeah, it wouldn't work without two people.
Okay, so you'd be pumping during the night?
No, we, well, some guys do. It, it depends on your contractor. There's not a, there's not a timeline. Hours that we have operated typically, they'll start in the morning, you know, eight AM and go until.
Wait, you haven't done this before.
We, oh yeah, we do. We just haven't had to cross the culverts.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's what initiated this policy was we've, we've been having to use tankers to go farther away. We can get there if we can put culverts in, but there was no policy in place to do that.
So, so if you're pumping four to five days. You do have somebody on twenty-four hours a day monitoring that activity?
No, it's only when you're actively pumping.
So you, you, you leave the hoses out, but you're not pumping?
Correct.
Okay, so when you're actively pumping, it's just during daytime hours?
That's how the crews that we've contracted with, I know that there are others that will go later. Yep.
Okay, but you understand that they have to be staffed or have somebody there. Okay.
And it doesn't, that's why I was saying, and I think that's probably what Iowa State was getting at. I don't know if you could, you couldn't physically do it with one person. You have to have one person who's out in the tractor doing the application and the other person. Monitoring the, the pump at the barn, uh, not only for spill detection, but also environmental for the, for the pigs in the facility. You know, you want to make sure that everything's functioning properly.
Okay. And you said three miles would be the longest?
Technically, whatever you're willing to pay for, you would have to, you could station multiple pumps, you know, and go a long ways. If you had the culverts and the pumps, everything else, but. There's an economic threshold of, once you get to that three mile mark, your cost of pumping versus. The value of the manure that you're getting. It doesn't work.
Who owns the hoses? If you're contracting with somebody, do they provide the hoses?
Yep, so they provide the hoses, the tractor, the applicator, um, all of that, yep.
Okay, one of those, I did talk to several DNR officials when this first came up. And that, you know, the hoses getting old, the hoses being in not good shape is a lot of the reason that there are spills. So, um, I'm wondering how, you know, that, that's what I'm concerned about is if you have a contractor come. And they're using old hoses that shouldn't, they shouldn't be using anymore. You can, you can say the pressure, there's pressure and you shut it off immediately, but you can still spill a lot of liquid manure pretty fast. So.
Yeah, I mean, we, we work with reputable contractors. I mean, I, I can't speak to. To what other people's or requirements are. Ours are that we want them to be certified, have, you know, nice equipment. And that they're maintaining it. And I think that's part of, uh. Part of our manure management plan with the DNR annually is that, um, that. Or not ours, their, their certification, I should say. They act, they do have a responsibility of. Maintaining, but then also going through that equipment. So if they're not doing that, they could be deemed out of compliance with their. Certification.
What's your plan if there's a spill?
Yep.
What would you do?
Yep, so let's say you're applying, your pressure drops, you would immediately turn off, do the, the, the shut off. And then you would hopefully be able to identify the leak that's not. In the right of way would obviously be the preference, because that would just be in a field that you're already applying on anyways. And so you would, you would then go and spread that manure out using a tillage tool. Um, if it's in the right of way, um, then that's where you would want to follow kind of standard procedures of. Of in some cases, the, they've put berms in place, other cases, they've, they build some sort of physical. Barrier to capture it and then if it's assuming, depending on the size of the leak. You know, if you can pump it out, you could throw a pump, a some pump there, as best you can to get it out. And then, um, the rest of it would be following the DNR, um, kind of procedures.
So who does that? You or the contractor?
So it would. It'd be a combination because it's, it's, it would be their equipment in this case that malfunctioned. So the contractor would be the pri, the primary responsible party. We as the building owner know that we're going to be involved in whatever, so we would also be there. And then we have to notify the DNR as well, and so they will, they will come out, um, and. And then be a part of it too.
Okay, and I, I know that. Semis can, you know, I know that spills can happen anyway, you know, they can happen with trucks. I understand that. But I'm just trying to make sure that if we approve this one on in Story County, that people are prepared for it, even though it's not likely prepared for a spill. And I've seen other kind of things where a contractor. In kind of another construction operation just left. You know, so I'm asking you as the owner.
Yep.
Person who took out this application, what if that were to happen? Would you be prepared to deal with a spill? If you had a contractor just say, oops, I better get out of here, something bad happened?
We would be and we would, to be honest with you, we have more incentive. To, to do that than the contractor does even. So that's why it's a very realistic question that you're asking. Cause if a contractor just ups and leaves. You know, it's not their reputation on the line. It's not their manure. I mean, you can talk about the economic benefits of losing manure. The reality is a spill should be somewhat contained where it's not the value of the manure that matters more is actually frankly, the. Reputation of our family and our, our entity and we're going to be a part of that. Yep.
So I do have a question, question if I may.
I've got my horn, but so go ahead.
Yeah, no, just was kind of right, right on this when you were asking that. So are the applicators, then they're certified? Is that kind of the same thing as licensed or is that just kind of the?
Yep, so it's the, so because I'm not a licensed applicator, I today cannot actually. Physically perform the pumping activity, um, and so, you know, like many things in agriculture, if you're the farmer, you can do things, right? But when it comes to this, the DNR is not allowed that you actually have to go through. Become a licensed applicator and certified to do so. And so that's where, because we don't have that certification, we've, we've always had to contract this out.
Okay, thank you.
Can you truck and apply without being certified?
No, you have to have same, yeah, the, the, the licensing are all the same, uh, or as far as the requirements or the DNR says if you're, whether you're using tanks or, or. Or if you're the one running the applicator, um, I believe it's all of those. It's all, everybody has to be licensed. I'm not sure. I guess if they have differences between, there's like a tanker license or. Or, or not, you know, I think the DOT may have. You know, your truck may have, you may have to have a, like your CDL classification, you may have to be different if you're hauling manure. Um, depending on how that material is classified versus dry goods or grain or farm, farm inventories.
I know that, um, I issue extension offers the training here in a, in Story County in Ames. Um, I'm just going to ask you this, are you willing to go through that training or send somebody, one of your staff to that training? So that you know what's required and you can monitor your contractor?
Definitely.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yep, whether it's me or my manager, I mean, for us, we always look at it to who's the person that's actually going to be. On site, right, to manage it. That's the person that needs, needs the training.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, whoever you would have monitoring that operation to make sure it was done well. Because we always want to think contractors again, will do it well, but you don't know.
Well, if I don't understand their process, am I the best person to hold them accountable? You know what I mean? I, I get what you're saying. It's just not unrealistic at all or unreasonable math.
Would you still be hauling by semi, some manure?
So.
Or you just want to do it all by dragline?
Our preference would be to do it all by dragline. If, um, we are able to put culverts in, then. I would say we would have a very high probability of doing that. The only caveat is our friends at the railroad have. Different, maximum different requirements about what, you know, because I can't go put a culvert under the railroad. So if we have to haul manure to a field that's, that we would have to get across the railroad. Um, if there's not an existing culvert and if they won't approve our request. Then we would have to look at using, um, the, the tanks. Yep, that'd be our only, only option.
How many other KFA owners in Story County would want to do draglines or do? Is that we're talking to you and you, you obviously have looked into this, you've done a good job, but you're not everybody, you're not speaking for all the, all the.
Correct.
Operators and owners or operators in Story County.
Yep. I don't know the exact number, to be honest with you, because. I know of several that prefer to do the tankers just because it's frankly, it's easier. You don't have to lay hose out and, but, uh, we, or they just don't have as contiguous of fields. That we as a family do, um, I'm sure that. There are others that are doing it already, probably.
We've heard that.
How many? I just, you know, in southeast part of the county, you know, there's some going on.
What did you say, Darren? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That, we know there's some pumping going on down in southeast, south of Collins.
And some people have taken lines across county roads, right, kind of right away.
Yeah, we've known that's happened before. That's another reason why we.
That was part of where I, because I reached out to Darren and I said, hey, we, we would like to do this. What do I need to do? And that's what kind of kicked some of this off, I think, because of the policy, so.
There are counties that have very low traffic volumes that do allow it over the roads and stuff, but that's very rural counties. But even, even, I don't know if I want that liability, you know, I mean, I, this, this is, I, I'm very supportive of what, what you've all put together. I think it's fair and reasonable.
Well, Darren brought it to our watershed working group, our county group, and I think that was a, that was a really good move because we got a lot of. A lot of discussion about that and that's a, that's a group that cares a lot about water quality. And we, the last thing in the world we want to see is to have a manure spill.
Correct, same here.
Story and, and it can come from various ways. The DNR people I talked to said, you can, you can lose a lot of manure really quickly. If you have a problem, you know, you can say it's pressurized, but something can happen and you can lose a lot of manure quickly. The other thing they said is that there was one spill that happened a few years ago. And what the contractor did is they put the, the hose through a culvert. And got it through, but they didn't look in the culvert. And there was a lot of sharp metal. There was a lot of trash in the culvert, immediately slashed the hose.
Yep.
You know, so there's things, there's things like that, that a contractor can not think of, can do. And that's, that's why I wanted to talk to DNR to say, what are the problems? What have you seen?
Yep.
And they're saying, well, there's problems either way. So you just got to do the best you can. And if we already have people who may be using draglines and using them across the road. Without doing an application, without seeing what our policy is, then we need a policy.
Right.
We can't say just, we won't allow that in Story County. It's obvious we need a policy. I appreciate your coming here today to talk about it and I appreciate all the work Darren's done and all the work county employees have done. I think, let me ask you this, considering the fact that we're sitting here having a good conversation with you, but there's other owners out there who may be doing this. If you were in Darren's shoes, if you were in our shoes, what else? If you were in Darren's shoes, if you were in our shoes, what else would you put in this application to make sure that we do not have a spill?
Mm hmm.
In Story County.
I think that, I think you've covered a lot of it. I, I think the, the tough part for you all is trying to make sure that the D N R is doing their part too, right? I mean, we, we all, and, and I don't want, they do, they do a great job and they require all the licensing and certifications. It just, you know, it depends on who's, who's a, you know, that my only concern would just be is making sure I clearly understand the process so I can follow the rules versus having competing programs that one is different or conflicts with another. And I, I haven't seen anything, at least from what was posted online with the agenda that, that, that conflicted with the D N R. So I, I think you're okay there. Uh, I do think you brought up a great point though, of just making sure that the building owner, not just the contractor has a plan. You know what I mean? Cause we, like we have, even with our, with our facilities, you know, part of our, um, N P D E S permit and manure management plan. I mean, we, we have to have those contingency planning and that was all part of when we said that. So, um, so yeah, just understanding there and then making sure we have adequate tools, not just available, but accessible and readily accessible. There's a lot of things on the farm that are sitting in the fence row. Well, yeah, I have that, but you know, can I go dig it out?
Out of gas, right?
Yep. It's happened before, uh, not on any of this, but.
Darren, are you thinking about a couple of the extra things you might want to put in here?
Yep.
Yeah. Two people on, at all times.
That sounds reasonable.
Minimum, that minimum too.
Yeah. I, I think that's very wise. I mean, if, if important people might not like me saying this, but if you're one guy out there trying to do all of this, you are being stupid, frankly, unsafe. So, so I think that you're wise to make that a minimum of two people.
And I know the contract, you know, for doing the pumping is going to be between the owner and the contractor. But is there any way we can ensure that the contractor reads and signs and understands the policies?
Thank you.
Is that in there?
I was struggling with that a little bit because we've got a policy and then we got a permit and how much I was reflecting. Cause people aren't going to read the policy. They're going to read the permit that they got to fill out. And so I was trying to put as much information.
The contractor signs the permit. Did I miss that?
Um, they don't, wow. So the way I interpreted it, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yep.
If I sign as the permit holder with the county, I'm putting myself as the responsible party.
Mm hmm.
County by identifying the pumping contractor I'm using. I'm, I'm notifying you all that I'm going to use them ultimately though. If something goes wrong from the county standpoint, it's the permit holder that you all. So then it's up to me to hold them accountable or if I, let's, God forbid, something happens and I get fined or have to do something.
That's between you and the contractor.
Me and the county, and I can go after the contractor if I want, but I don't know if you necessarily want to get in the middle of that.
No, we don't. We don't, I don't think, but I think we want to make sure that
But I need.
Every owner is as responsible as you, that you're going to say contractor, this is, you know, this is what's.
You all would want their name and phone number though, for sure.
We do. Yeah.
For sure. I think people.
That's why we put it on the permit.
It doesn't specifically say the applicant is the owner. So we probably need to make that clear on here. So it has applicant name, but then it also has the pumping contractor name and their certification numbers on the permit. So.
Yeah.
I think you have, make sure there's two, because there are guys that will apply for themselves. They have the license and will apply themselves. And so they would be both applicant and the contractor technically in that scenario, but it still comes back to who's applying for the permit is the one that needs to be held accountable.
Hmm. I think you do have on this, Darren, is something you have pumping contractor name and telephone number, I, Iowa D N R applicator certification number.
Yep. We've got all that. It just doesn't specifically say the applicant needs to be the facility owner.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't say what applicant?
The applicant needs to be the facility owner. It can't be the pumping operation.
Okay. So under applicant, you want to put owner?
Yeah.
Good.
I do have, um, one question and thank you Scott for, for being here today. Um, has, has this been shared with like, um, anyone from Farm Bureau? Have we gotten any input from others, um, who might be applying for the same permit?
We have not. At, to this point, we talked about, probably after we come up with a policy, we need to send it out to everybody. But as far as input, we haven't got it, um, anything from Farm Bureau or anything yet.
I haven't shared it. Maybe I should have with port, like the Story County port producers. I haven't, I haven't done that. I'd.
That would be a good place to get it too.
I think comments would be, would be good. I think you'll get your policy what you want first.
Yeah.
Why cover the mic?
Nope. That's a good idea. Get a little more feedback before we officially approve it.
Mm hmm. Then when you, when it's officially approved, you would send it to everybody who's got a K F O in.
We've got a list of that from the D N R.
Yeah.
One thing when you communicate, cause this helped me a lot. You had shared with me that you, you used, I think Hancock and another county or two, or Hamilton to, as kind of the baseline to help guide you. I think if you, I think that's good to share because sometimes port producers in Story County made questions where, you know, where it all started. But I think if they see that, hey, no, we're, we're working with other counties that have strong livestock presence to use, to have a very fair, realistic policy. That should hope, hopefully head off a lot of kind of the.
That's a good point.
Conspiracies that, that fly around with we, so.
Well, good input. Appreciate you coming today.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you guys taking this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your, uh, taking the time and, um, explaining the process to us and how you're doing it. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
All right. I think that's all I need today. We'll be back at some point with some revisions and, um, talk about how we're going to send this out to more people and get input and run it through Ethan and go from there.
Okay. Super. Thank you again for, in particular for bringing it to the, the watershed working group. I think that was a, that was, you got a lot of good feedback there. And Scott's given excellent feedback. So we have another item for you. Okay. Discussion of driveway spacing requirement and current driveway issues. And this is just a discussion item.
Correct. What this is, uh, you know how we have certain requirements, three hundred foot spacing, sight distance requirements for new driveways. Um, unfortunately we do get the few that people won't accept the policy when we tell them what it is and they want me to take it to the board. Uh, so that's what I'm doing here. We got two spacing issues and then the third one's more of a drainage issue. So let me start with the first one. This is just south of Ames on Riverside Drive. Um, it's paved just north of here. And the pavement ends when it gets to the city limits. Uh, the city limits is in blue. So this, this happens to be a parcel that's in the county, the long uh, parcel. What they're requesting is a, a new driveway. A little hard to see. This was right over the top of it, but, uh, right here, there, this is their south property line. And with the stream going through here, accessing the south portion of property is a little difficult, but, uh, how they've done it forever is you see there's a driveway right here. Uh, they follow down. There's a gate in the fence line here that gives them access to their property. Um, that's been in place so long, they essentially have a easement by prescription that they've used it for so long. I think his concern is there's some new development and property owners taking place down here. So he, he kind of wants to secure his own access. It's very close to the existing drive. It doesn't meet the three hundred foot. It's only about a hundred foot away. And it's very tight to this drainage way. And it starts to drop off really quick. Um, I have a number of concerns about placing it there anyway. So we've told him he needs to keep his access where it's at. And he essentially has an easement. Um, so that is our, our perspective on the situation. I just wanted to pass that by you and tell him that's our, tell you that's how we're going to proceed with it. And if he wants to come to the board directly, I'll tell him that would be his, um, last request if he wanted to come. But I will also point out the ditch along here off the road is very shallow. It's only about a foot deep. So you could drive a, a vehicle across the ditch very easily if you wanted to do that. Um, so he can't get access there without an actual driveway, but, uh, there's just a number of concerns on putting the driveway there. And it doesn't meet the spacing. So it, that's something we don't. There has to be a very special circumstance for us to, uh, have a type more tightly spaced than three hundred feet.
What is that like for?
Over here.
Yeah.
I do not know. Um, it's just for us.
Okay.
So I don't know how often he has to access it.
That was my question, what he needed to access at four and.
I think the change is just that there's new property owners down here. So he's getting a little more concerned about using that in the future. He doesn't, doesn't want to have to deal with that anymore, but, uh, I think he's going to have to get some sort of easement in place if he's concerned about that.
Okay. Thanks.
I plan to direct that one. The second one, um, this is on two ninetieth street. South of Ames again, highway sixty nine is over here. New home was just built there a year or two ago. Um, if you look on our photos, you won't even see the house. This got this one off of Google. The issue is he, originally when he built the house, he wanted a circle drive. And it's again, it's only a hundred and twenty five feet or something between the two. We don't permit circle drives because of the space. They don't meet the spacing requirement. And this farm already has like four driveways going to the field already. So we're getting a lot of driveways already. Um, so when he built the house, he asked about the driveway and was told it couldn't happen. So then he came back six months to a year later and says, he's now concerned about the school bus turning around in his driveway and safety. Um, so he needs a circle driveway for the school bus. Um, I tried to work with them on a number of compromises. When that usually happens, we talk about a turnaround for the school bus, which he essentially had built already here. That's rock. And he's got a paved driveway. Uh, a school bus could very easily turn or he could build a new one. He got, he's got a septic field here. So he didn't want to build it there. Asked if he could use this. He says, no, that's where he parks his truck. Uh, if we could build another one, and he says, no, the school bus went back into a utility box, but everything um, had an excuse why it wouldn't work. So my gut is he, he just wants the circle drive. Um, but he's, his concern is this field here gets planted with corn. So in the fall, when the school bus has to back out, uh, it won't have as good a visibility. But there is very few locations as flat as this and this, you can see forever. Um, a school bus backing out with its flashing light, you got a thousand feet seeing that ahead of you. I don't see it as a safety issue. He does. Um, so at this point, uh, we're telling him if he's got the safety issues with the school bus, there's plenty of room for it to turn around. So he needs to work with that first. Okay. Now the last one is a drainage issue. Linda, you're more familiar with this one. You've been out there with me. Been dealing with this for probably fifteen years. Um, it's got to the point, something's got to change. Um, the housing question is right here with the circle drive again. Somehow this circle drive got put in on a county road, I believe, without a permission. We can't find any permits. Um, don't think we would have allowed the situation to go in like it is. Again, that's another problem with circle drives. We always end up with drainage issues with two driveways that close together. But what the issue is, when this was put in, this whole area about right here and further north, all drains down this ditch. And then it goes under the road right about here. And then it goes here and then out behind his property. This has a covert here. This has a covert under this driveway, about an eighteen inch metal covert. And then you get down to this driveway and there's just a tile intake, uh, which is not a good situation for drainage. It's when we get the big rains, the four and five inches, especially it backs water up. This property owner is quite a ways away, but he's always, uh, the first one to complain. We get the bigger rains about water backing all the way up. Um, this property owner gets water in their ditch and it sits water a lot. Um, so we've talked to these people many times onsite, uh, prior supervisors have been out there with me as well. Two issues with this house and this house, they were both built essentially right on the original waterways. So then they questioned why they're getting water all the time coming through their properties. Cause the houses were dealt right on the waterways, unfortunately. Uh, we were to able to come up with a bit of a solution with this property owner. The water comes through here. We dug some ditch around this corner to try to get the water to go around that corner instead of through his property, which has helped some, uh, but when you have a natural course of drainage, that's where the water is always going to want to go. So we've fixed that a little bit, but then it's so flat through here, this obstruction and water just backs up water through the neighborhood. Um, so we eventually got more complaints. So we went out there again with Linda, um, and walked the area. And whenever you go out there, the property owners tend to come out because they all have issues with drainage and they want to see what's going on, which was good. We got to talk with everybody at the last meeting, including this property owner. He came out. Um, we wanted to see what the issues were before we talked with him. Um, but he's kind of accusing us of not involving him in the situation, but he came out and we talked to him, which was great. And then I did follow up a week or two later by email, telling him what our process was going to be to resolve the situation. Um, I do mention that because I did get another email, long email from him about a half hour before the board meeting. It's kind of accusing us again of ramming this through quickly and not involving him. That's not the case here. Um, and we're not going to do anything until we vet this completely with this property owner. Um, but essentially after our meeting, uh, we said we would jet this tile to see if it was working. It goes under the driveway and then it heads down here. A couple of times in the past, uh, this tile has gotten blocked, tiles and trees don't cooperate well. The roots block tiles. There's a lot of trees in here, so he's had to jet it a couple of times. The big problem here is the tile that drains this public ditch. Once it gets out of the road right away, that is a private tile. We, we don't maintain it. We don't go out and fix it. We can't go out there. Essentially it's on private property. So it's his expense to fix that. So he's had to jet that a couple of times in the past at his expense. Um, but that's how this was set up, um, by the property owner that built the house. Unfortunately, this isn't the original property owner. So he's not fully aware of, of how it was built in the first place. Um, but in the past 10 years or so, we've told these property owners that it's essentially a, a private property issue. And you're in a subdivision, you just, you guys need to get together and come up with a private solution. Um, I think they've tried that over the years and it's just, it's never worked out. So they've eventually called us back again and said, you gotta help. But nothing's happening. So eventually we had that last meeting with Linda and I told the property owner that we've got to do something more with this tile situation. We did give him the option of fixing the blockage. We jetted through and got through the driveway and the blockage is right about here somewhere. Um, so I said, you either got to big that up and fix the tile blockage, or we're going to have to put a covert under this driveway to open flow it, which is what should have been done in the first place. Um, unfortunately it wasn't. So now we're dealing with the repercussions of that. So if we put a, if we had, if he will not fix the tile and get it operational again, we will have to put a covert under here. What he's concerned with, with that is that'll be more water coming down here and going between the houses. There's another house just south of his. So the water goes right in between the two houses. He thinks that could start erosion through here. And he's got a retaining well built already. Cause it's such a tightly fitted house on a lot. Which is probably why this house was the last one to be built in the whole neighborhood. I'll, I'll show you a picture of that. Just because of the drainage issues and it's hard to fit everything in here. So that's kind of where. So that's kind of where we stand. If we, if he will not get the tile working, we will have to put a covert. We can do the work in our right away, which would be to put a covert in here, but he's paved this driveway. So we will have to remove some of that pavement to get the covert in there. In his last letter here, he, he refers to a bunch of times in this real, most recent one, that our water is damaging him. I don't know where that's coming from. It's not our water. It's natural course of drainage. It's just come, water flows downhill. And yet if it comes on your property, you have to manage it on your own property. Um, so he, he keeps calling our water needs to be managed by us and we need to figure out how to get it to drain properly and not erode his property. And he wants us to, our driveway policy has always said, if they choose to pave the right away portion, if we have to go maintain that covert at some point and dig it up, uh, the county is not responsible for the, the pavement portion, he would have to put that back himself. And then, uh, what was the other thing I was going to mention? Oh, he's also requesting in this letter that we bore the new covert instead of tear out the concrete. Um, if we put a new covert in, it's going to be the same size as this one. It's going to be an 18 inch metal covert. That's going to be fairly expensive to bore and I'm not sure a boring machine could even fit in here. Um, once you go to the next slide, can I give you a better idea? Here's the blockage point here. The water comes down the ditches. This is the driveway that has the covert in it. Then it hits here, has to go in the intake. We jetted across and it was open through here and it was blocked right in here. They've done some landscaping work inside the right away, again, without a permit. But this is why we require permits for this type of stuff to warn them. You do this work in the right away, a utility could come in and damage it and they're not responsible. If we gotta do covert work, we're not going to be responsible for it. So we always caution people. You can do work at your own risk in there if it meets our standards, but uh, this was not permitted. So he's, doesn't want to dig it up because it's going to damage all this landscaping work, which I understand. But we've got to get the drainage working again somehow. I believe this was probably put in because the water backs up to a point where it starts overflowing his driveway and it was eroding down the other side. Um, but that's just another reason why we got to get this drainage working. If we put the cord under here and open float, you can see it. It travels through here back behind his house and there is like a retaining wall or something built here. He thinks it'll start eroding under that and it very well could.
Built up that lot that retaining wall was there. He built up that.
It sure looks that way to me.
I'm concerned about his neighbor to the south there. There's such much lower land. And what's happening to that house is what he's done.
Yeah.
He built it up or would have been the previous owner.
The previous.
Sorry, I, I can't, I can't hear, um, what you're saying supervisor Markin. I was just asking if he had built up that lot. Somebody built up the lot higher than the, to the south. And that's what I'm concerned about is what's happening to that place.
Um, a couple, these are pictures he sent in yesterday. This is standing on the driveway looking down. That's the intake that the water has to go into, into that tile and then it drains away. Uh, that's the intake here looking back up. There is a covert under the second driveway here. It's just, it's another thing we gotta do is we gotta get this cleaned up. Um, because it doesn't drain well, it tends to filter in and all grasses grow. So we've got to get this pipe open. The person that lives up here backs up water and they have water sitting in their ditch as well. There's two reasons for water sitting in their ditch and he mentions that in his last email. One water backs up and two, they've got a mailbox and I think they built a little burn to walk across the ditch to get to their mailbox. And that's blocking water as well. But we need to talk to the property owner and say, hey, either we'll remove that burn for you if you'd like. Otherwise you're going to have water sitting in your ditch. Um, they've complained to us a lot about that water sitting in the ditch. I think they've caused some of that on their own.
Also remember Darren, that when we went out there, that there are some people who have kind of filled in ditches because they wanted more lawn. And that hasn't helped the drainage situation there.
Partially, and I will, we'll hit that last here. Go one more slide. Talk about this first. This is in 2003, the photo is. You can see all the houses is there except for this, this is the lot and there is no house there. This is right before it was built. So I think you can start to see maybe some stuff being built up. Um, but again, water flows down here and then goes back down through here. But he's starting uh, to comment a lot about development and us not managing it, uh, and the drainage. But his was the last house to go in. And so it's hard to blame the other people for what's taking place at this point. So I wanted to point that out to you. Um, is there another slide for this last? No, go back to the first one. His letter also points out, like you mentioned, people filling in ditches. This is a private road right here. This is air smother. This is a public road that we maintain. We do not maintain this road. So the water comes underneath this road and down here, he is requesting we maybe find a way to push the water around his house the other direction. That will get into the private road and we didn't, they'd have to dig a new channel through here and you generally don't try to reroute water. It's technically illegal. You have to follow a natural course of drainage. I do not know. All the evidence I have shows the natural course of drainage is here, but it's hard to say because I don't think any of this was permitted. So we didn't know what it looked like beforehand. Uh, but there's a channel that starts right here and it's uh, drops off pretty quickly into a pond and it's starting to erode its way back up, but that is one thing he wants to look at is if we can reroute the water around the house the other way, but that be at the expense of the private development and I doubt they're going to want to do that. Again, this property owner has said when water is poned up to a point, they pump water over the driveway to get it out of there. Cause it's blocked because of this driveway. So something, something needs to be done. We have a duty to maintain open flow of our ditches, but once it reaches that private property line, we cannot control what goes on out here. Uh, so that's why we'd be forced to daylight it and open, put a covert in and it would be flowing over the ground where right now it all flows under a tile. He has the option of fixing that tile.
This has no connection with any drainage district facilities that may be around there.
No.
It's not a drainage district issue.
So yeah, that was going to be my question. So is, we don't know if the tile is broken or what it is because it's a private tile.
We jetted into it and it, the jet stopped at a blockage. So it's either broken or collapsed or just this clogged with something. So they couldn't, they couldn't get the jet through it, meaning it's probably something fairly serious.
So my question is if you put in a covert, if they don't fix the tile, are they just going to see the water back up?
No, it'll, it'll run over the ground then. So it'll flow much better if we outlet it.
It'll, it'll push it through the tiles, I could think.
No, the tile will essentially be useless at that point and not needed because the water will run above ground instead of. Yeah. Elevations do allow for it to run above ground. A lot of times when there's tile, there's no other option. It's a lower area that won't drains. They put tile in. This is a situation where they raided the blockage and put the tile because they didn't want the water running on top of the ground.
So it sounds like the options are either to do the covert or water would run over. Or if he would fix the tile, he or the association, I'm not sure whose responsibility would fix the tile that may address the situation.
Yes, we've given him that option, but that's the less desirable on our end because every five years it's an issue. Tile just takes maintenance and it feels, he's getting tired of paying for it, which I understand, but only option then is to surface drain it over, overflow.
I just want to make sure I was clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
If it surface drains, what happens to that house to the south?
Uh, you're correct. I'm more concerned about that one as far as doing that option because it sits so much lower. Um,
Kind of becomes slow.
Yep. So before we would do any of this, we'd meet with them as well. We have not met with that property owner. And the driveways to the south have some issues as well. It's not going anywhere else and that is our road. So there is some covert issues that need to be addressed on that side too, but it doesn't backwater up on anybody else. So nobody else is cared at this point. But we do probably need to address those at the same time when we're out there. Um, well, I, I wanted to get this in front of the full board because individual board members have gone out here for years and years and we just never come to a solution. Like I said, it was always the, what I think was the correct thing to do is to tell the association to get together and come up with a solution and they just can't work together or something and figure it out. So we have to get involved and do something.
You're right. It does all interrelate there because I, I, I called you and I went out there because I had the owner from that house to the north that called me. And when we went out, yeah, it was like this, it's how it's developed and it's what people have done for whatever their own individual reasons has just compounded the problem. It's, um, I don't know that you're going to solve it to everybody's satisfaction because I don't think there's and, and, and it's not that, you know, the county's role in it is limited to our right of way. And that's what people don't quite understand.
So at this point, I've, like I said, I've given him the two options. Either he gets the tile working or we gotta put the covert under it. And at this point he's saying neither. So we've got to do something. So I will give him that option one more time. You need to read through his last couple of emails. One was lengthy one. They sent another one right when the board meeting started. He wants a response on his email first. So we'll do that. Like say we're not in a big hurry, but we do need to get something resolved here early soon. Cause these upstream properties are getting tired of dealing with the water backing up.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my question. Is there a timeline that, um, he's been provided, um, in a, um, connection to those options or do we have a timeline?
Um, he hasn't, but this, he was given those options back in July of last year and.
Oh, I'm sorry Darren, your mic just completely cut out. I can't hear you at all.
Oh, did you hear any of that?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, he was, uh, given those two options back last July. So he's had a lot of time to think about this. Um, this wasn't just dumped on him the past week here. So we, we do plan to continue to address his concerns, but we're getting to that point where he's saying neither option's viable, but one of them's got to happen. So we got to make that decision. So like Linda had a good point, we do need to meet with the other property owner first to make sure they're aware of what's going to happen if that tile is not fixed.
Is there anybody else out there who would possibly, this would be to their detriment besides that person to the south? I think everybody else is, would benefit. Kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I don't believe anybody else because once it gets past his house, I said, there's a pond back here it drops into. So.
It's just that one.
Impact anybody else.
And that's why I, I kind of heard you say HO, meet with the HOA. And I don't know if I would suggest that because I think that's just going to make people more feeling like it's the county's responsibility.
Yeah. And that's what prior boards have kind of directed me to have them discuss it at their HOA themselves and come up with a solution, hire their own engineer. They have to just to make sure they're aware of, we're not going to solve the problem on private property.
I mean, if they wanted to meet with you, you could do that, but I wouldn't. Initiating it, initiating it might look like this is the county's responsibility when our responsibility is limited.
Well, that's where we stand with it. You can read the last email that came through. Um, we can follow up, but my next step, again, ask him one more time with which one of those options worked best for him. Then talk to the adjacent property owner. He wants us to expand the study of the whole area and everything and I'll, I'll look at all that. That's not a problem, but I know where the problem is right now. That needs to be fixed in the short term. There might be some longer term stuff we could do with the rest, but uh, this, it's time this gets resolved. So like I said, these, these weren't action items. I just wanted to get them in front of the board and let you know how I'm going to proceed. But they were all to the point where I felt it was beneficial to get them in front of the entire board.
I appreciate you. And I mean, a lot of your time to deal with an issue like this. And I appreciate that you looked into it so thoroughly and I've gotten back to him.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Next we have upcoming agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they're thinking, want to talk about? Okay. Then we'll go on to public comment number two. And comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action in the, on the comments due to requirements, the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. I don't see any members of the public in our public meeting room. Is there anybody online if, who wants to make a comment? If so, then raise your hand now. Okay. Seeing nobody, I'll close public comment number two. And we will discuss liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisor. Supervisor Faisal, would you want to go first?
Sure. Um, I have a, uh, women of NACO meeting this evening. Um, tomorrow, I'm sorry, I have my computer opening. Tomorrow I have a, um, we've got the joint drainage district meeting in the morning that I will be zooming into. And then, um, Story County Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Fund meeting in the afternoon and Boost tomorrow evening. Um, and hoping to make it to the Project Iowa event. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to do that. I have the Boost meeting um, scheduled in after and will be coming back to town around this time. Thursday, um, we have uh, strategic plan, education and input team meeting is on my calendar. And then CFR board meeting Thursday night. And then auditor's recognition Friday morning. I have a, a private appointment after that in Ames. And then, um, next week, Monday through Friday, I will be in St. Louis for the National Association of Counties, um, county officials advancing equity in the criminal justice system. So thank you again, uh, supervisor Markin for, um, running the meetings while I'm not there.
Sure. I'm kind of getting the hang of it again. Thank you. Hope you're having a good time. Uh, supervisor Hiddens.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So I've got on my calendar too, the Nevada Economic Development Council breakfast. Um, then the joint, uh, uh, drainage district meeting. I also had on the story county vehicle meeting as well, but I also just got notified that I uh, appointed to the NACO's healthy counties committee. So I have a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock for that. Uh, then I have a private appointment for my son tomorrow. And then tomorrow night I do plan on attending the Project Iowa event um, at the library. Thursday's a busy day. I'll do K, K H O I radio, um, in the morning. And then I have that, the strategic education input meeting, I have a Herta meeting after that. Um, then right after that is the Story County Economic Development Group meeting in Ames. So I may be a little late depending on what time Herta is done with. Uh, I have CICS in the afternoon, but I just got a notification that looks like that one was canceled, uh, for this month. Friday I have the auditor's office. Um, I have a personal appointment Friday morning and then I also have a, a meeting with Kara with YSS on Friday. So kind of a busy, busy week.
Tonight I'm going to be at the.
Tonight, I'm going to be at the OCIO Broadband Town Hall at the Research Park. Tomorrow, Nevada Economic Development Breakfast, Joint Drainage District Meeting in the afternoon. I will attend a city of Nevada annexation consultation. And I had on my agenda that planning and zoning was tomorrow night. Is that not right? It is. Is that the natural resource ordinance? I will attend that then. That's what I've got on my calendar, but sometimes things change. So I wasn't sure. So Thursday, the strategic plan and Story County Economic Development Commission at 10. And Friday auditor's recognition. Then I have a MIPA executive meeting and I have a meeting at the City of Ames in the afternoon. And I think I have a meeting next Monday with the Huxley Mayor to talk about some issues. And that's pretty much my week. So is there any other business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.